You want to sing Star Spangled Banner or something?
Yes, that would be fine. We would like to start. Uh, we need a motion to sign the warrants as written.
Motion to sign the warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Does anybody want a copy of it down there?
Yes, please. Excuse me. Thank you. Anyone else want to sign?
What are we doing here? There's a pen right here. So we need a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th. So move. Second.
I believe I have to make those. I agree here.
It's fine, but Dwayne's not here.
Okay.
Second. All in favor? Dan, this. And Tony. We have a little business on there, South Lubecrood Manford Land Gett. They are in the process of talking to their attorneys to make sure that the, um, access to the beach there remains public and also including vehicles to go down into the beach at LoTod, so the cameras can continue to make a living from there. So that's the, um, it's not finalized, but just wanted to give you an update. Um, new business. We need to actually sign the flood ordinance now that the town passed. So there's an official, original copy that we need to be certified by, hell, was that you? Do we sign in the bathroom? Jim?
Oh, good timing. What, how do we proceed with the processing of the flood ordinance?
Okay. The instructions are in there.
Okay.
And, uh, there's instructions up there. I'll have a copy of them, but there's instructions to immediately get a hold of, uh...
Well, it just says enacted. It was after today, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And you need to send a copy to...
Sure.
Give Sue Parker a call.
All right. Effective date? We don't know, so we won't fill that in, but it was enacted today.
Well, it's effective today.
It is.
Well, call her tomorrow.
Call her. Okay, I think it's just a certification, so you know, I don't think the selectmen have to sign that. I think you can certify, but we, with the minutes, you can certify, so I'm going to give you that.
Yeah, we need to give Sue Parker. But there was a, there's a sheet of paper, I saw it, with the, said, "To find an act much needed."
Jane Hart.
Jane and Sue, they're together.
All right. So the next on the agenda is to appoint the Safe Harbor Committee, which is, I need a motion to appoint, we'll do it in the, um, Order Committee, Peter Boyce, James Fitzgerald, Julie Keane, myself, so I can't sign the appointment paper. Uh, Stephanie Teslow and Mike Scovani. I think I got everybody.
I need a motion to accept them.
What were the names again, please?
Peter Boyce, James Fitzgerald, Julie Keane, Carol Dennison, Stephanie Teslow, and, and Mike Scovani.
Total of five.
Safe Harbor.
Total of five.
I think it was all in five.
So far.
Hmm, missing somebody. Peter, James, Julie...
Tony.
No, Tony's not on it. He's on the other one. Peter, James, Julie, Carol, Stephanie, that's five, and, uh, Mike. Mike, Stephanie, Carol, Julie, James, and Peter, that's six. Do you have them all there?
Yes.
You made a motion, second. All in favor? Except for me, I was. All right. The signees at the end, the meeting.
Can I ask a question regarding that?
Yes.
Because there was some discussion about it possibly being between the Red House and the historical society, I had asked to be on that, but I've been out of town.
And I asked you if you wanted to be on it.
And I said yes.
You said you would come when you felt like it, but you didn't actually want to be appointed.
I was heading out of town the next day. That's why I didn't make it. Clearly knew I wasn't going to make the 19th.
I have a blank appointment. Who'd be here?
Okay, I'll send you a question.
Just an appointment right now. And, and Bob's letter.
I make a motion to Chief Barbara. Second. All in favor?
Okay, that makes a nice seven. Perfect.
Who, who on this board?
Yeah.
Julie Fisherman.
Uh, Julie and, um, James and...
That's Jill.
Yes, he's a third generation fisherman.
Oh.
And then I'm not a fisherman, but I own a few boats anyway, so, there you go. Just because, I was thinking that...
You have a casting rod?
I have a... It would not be a good committee without any fishermen on it. Well, uh, we are going to say that June 14th at 5:00 is the first official meeting. Anyone else who wants to come and be part of that? Cecil.
Not to cause any hate and discontent, but our all members of that Safe Harbor Committee, resident of the town of Lubecrood.
Who wouldn't be? Oh, Ju, oh, um, you don't have to be a resident of the state, of the town Lubecrood to be on the committee.
Okay.
Only to vote.
Yep.
Thank you for me.
June 14th.
June 14th at 5:00. And we're open to other people being on, the more the merrier, probably. To quite a few people to get their garage put together. There was about 12, was there not? And that came up with a fantastic, look at that status. A lot of money.
Not exactly what the, uh, committee came up with.
Well, at least you had the prefab building part of it. That worked.
Well, that's about the only thing that ended up being...
You worked hard there.
Well, we did have a big committee.
Of several years, too.
But we'll, we'll sign all of this, um, later. Too many of them. So now we're going to appoint the Marijuana Ordinance Committee, which is Meredith Huntley, Eugene Gaffey, Mike Scovani, Renee Foley, Bob Jean, and Tony Canone.
Mr. Scovani would like to be noticed.
I'd like to be recognized, Madam Chairman. I, under the circumstances, it's regrettable that the town has voted not to accept the moratorium. Is that correct?
Are you wanting me to say something?
No. I want to say that based on that, I see that their road is going to be much more difficult now, and, uh, based on my knowledge of the process, I will have to withdraw my name from that committee.
Withdrawn, accepted.
Thank you.
So, Meredith Huntley, Eugene Gaffey, Renee Foley, Bob Jean, and Tony Canone, and anyone else interested, we'll have to find out when the first meeting is. We don't, we have to get together and figure that out. I need a, um, motion to nominate that. Second. All in favor? There you go. All right, good. That's, that, I think we'll, we'll get a nice ordinance. I, I value your opinion mostly, but in this case, I think that the moratorium was redundant and it was worded incorrectly, and I'm glad it was waived. Nomination papers are available May 9th for selectmen. Two positions on the select board are coming due. Uh, one position, two positions for a term of three years on the, on the selectmen, one position for a term of three years on the school board, one position for a term of three years on the Lubec Water District, and one position on the Budget Committee for a three-year term and one position for a two-year term. We encourage everyone to come, take out papers if you would like to volunteer to be on one of these positions. The more the merrier. Love to have volunteers to do this.
When's the closing date?
I think it's June 19th.
You say?
But not positive.
Papers must be returned at 4:00 PM on June 19th.
I'm sorry, 4:00 PM is it?
On June 19th.
Okay, before we open the bids, let's do the, let's do it real quick. Uh, what, we had a little problem with the wire, with electrical wire, this is really more for the selectmen to see. You're aware of that, Tony?
No, I haven't.
Just look at this. There, this is down by that white filming, by the, by the boat landing. There's some exposed wires that I guess happened, and we're having to get that fixed. I just have, didn't have a chance to show you.
It looks like a growing gully.
And that's in the velocity zone. That little area there.
Velocity zone.
Yes, yes. That's in the dreaded blue zone.
That would be the blue zone.
So it's likely that we approved that in season.
Yes.
Moments ago.
Yeah. Well, it's, I got Ricky down there, and it's going to be run correctly. It was run, um, incorrectly, and it's going to be rerouted.
Okay. Jim is on, Jim is met with the electrician, and we're going to be mediating.
Do you want to be very, and run down?
Saying it's steel pipe as opposed to PVC?
Well, we haven't decided yet.
Okay.
But it's, it's going to be in pipe, direct buried.
But they're saying PVC is subject to more damage than steel pipe still comes with.
Steel can rust, too.
Galvanized.
It's in water. I think it'll be okay down.
Maybe it's older, and it should be steel, and then convert to gal, uh, to PVC, which is the underground.
I think, I think they should use direct buried plastic cable and PVC, which would be fine down there. Because it's far enough back that we're in the way back, and we won't get to it now. But at least, as long as...
What does that mean, Jim?
Uh, okay, very good.
That means the pump, that pumps up to the Marina Building, the sewer.
Sewer.
Oh, the, 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 oh, the observation house. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And it used to go from the pole over to the Zorn Building, down, and then out.
Oh.
But somehow its condition of transference and conveyance of that property back to Zorn after he was supposed to have made it, you know, and did, uh, alleviate the dangerous conditions, like, you know? Somehow, and I didn't know about it, somebody made a decision to, uh, let him have his way and have that taken out, uh, being supplied through the building. Because the wire went from the pole to the building down, and then out to the pump. Well, they've been there for god knows how long, and it was, and it was above the, the water, and, uh, anyway.
All right, well, we'll take it there.
If you mean taking care, just to let you know. So the next item is to buy the propane tank. Here's your jacket.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for the day, Jim.
The night, thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to buy the propane tank for the town building, which is $275. The reason why I'm requesting this or suggesting that we do this is because we purchased a tank at the town garage. We purchased a tank in the cycle, and this is the only other propane tank to purchase, and if we do that, we will be able to accept the bids for propane. You can't take propane out to bid without owning your own tanks. So I need a motion to purchase this tank.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Animal welfare donation. Okay, we have this... Renee, you want to explain what happened about the cats this year?
All right, um, there's been ongoing issues with feral cats on School Street, and when a property owner sold her property, cats that she was, were taken care of, that, I don't want to put words in places that don't belong, but shelters were made for these feral cats. Some of you may be familiar. There's about 10 or 12 of them. The owner sold their house, and the new owner doesn't plan on doing what the other owner was doing for these feral cats. So people have been coming to our, our animal control officer, Rhonda, trying to find a solution. Um, and investigating through the laws and, and literature, um, it was discovered that the town of Lubecrood, as every town is mandated to have, has an animal welfare account, that when you register your dog, a portion of that license goes into this account, and it's a non-lasering, this verbiage that we heard earlier, it's a non-lasering account, it does not roll over to the dental fund, and it is geared for animal control. So, yeah.
Yes, and actually, to speak highly of Renee, she found this $5,000 in an account once, when we've been reviewing all of the different accounts, which hadn't been touched in a while, so...
So, with Rhonda, and I believe SOS has been helping, um, they've trapped five of these cats and found a place that would accept them, and Rhonda wants to give a donation to this place that would take these feral cats and live off the rest of their lives.
It's a farm, right?
Basically, yes.
And that wasn't like $100 away, but she took them all down there.
And she wants to donate to the cause, and $100 was...
She did.
And it can come out of this account.
Noble thing she did.
Which is earmarked for that, and so we've got to do that to know all of that.
Yeah.
So yay, you found money. Renee found, it's money.
Do we need to vote, I mean, just...
Yeah, we should just say it. We, I would like to make a motion that we vote that whenever these cats are taken, that we give a equal donation, because there are many feral cats, and we, maybe we're lucky we'll take a few more. So that would be a recurring donation if we have to use this feral stray cat.
Yes.
Do, is that good?
Do you want a cat, PMS?
$100.
Okay.
Because it's a long ways away.
Oh, I understand. So I'm saying, if they just start wide open, if you tap it at $100...
No, 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 the same donation, I mean, it's $100. And you would, they would be taking more than one cat down there to the pump. I was doing a second. Is it all in favor? Okay, we had a request from, oh, Cecil, sorry.
I just wanted to ask a question and make a comment.
Okay.
It's nice to make a donation. I think this is a good cause to have these feral cats taken care of. It's good that the animal control officer took care of this problem, but doesn't the taxpayers of the town Lubecrood already have, put money into a place to take care of cats?
You mean the SOS?
I mean SOS.
Yeah. Rhonda's been so good in reporting to me every step of the way. Uh, these cats that were trapped have been at SOS for at least two weeks now, which is longer than, and these are wild animals. There's no taming them. Um, what do you do with them? You can't, they're not, you're not going to make them pets. So the choice is to have them euthanized, or what? And luckily, she's found this person that would take them, and so you, you can't leave them at SOS for the rest of their lives. They're not, they're sheltered.
They're not adoptable.
They're not able to, so you can either pay $79 to euthanize each cat, which nobody really, I wouldn't want to do that.
That's a lot. It's more, it's more economical than...
This money isn't taxpayer money, actually. It's money that comes from every dog registration, so it's, and it's mandated to be used for animal control.
Yep.
And to control of stray animals.
So, so we're going to use money that comes in from dog registration?
And can only be used for animal control.
And, that's right.
Yeah.
And we're going to make a donation.
For cats.
To take care of a cat that we've already, the taxpayers have already put money into a place to take care of cats.
But we only give SOS $500, and if we euthanize every feral cat, that's seven...
Last year you gave them $1,000.
Five, five hundred, five hundred to take care of the cats and five hundred for a donation for help, to help repay the cats. They're two separate donations.
We can actually, we can take out of this fund for that. That $500 that we give can come out of this fund to go to SOS. Like, you no longer have to use taxpayer money. It comes out of the fund, which is meant for.
Right. Where'd the fund come from?
It comes, is set up by the state statute.
State. It sends it off, but we didn't cheat as far as...
No, it doesn't send it to us. It's collected at the time of a dog registration. Our program splits it up, and a portion of that will go into the town.
So this account has been around for a long time.
Dogs and cats are getting along finally. Isn't that amazing?
It's nice to come around.
This is uncovering something that another...
Isn't it wonderful? Isn't compromise wonderful?
It's marvelous. It's marvelous.
A previous administration maybe have been aware of all that, but the decision may change, or is that, you know, we're finding...
I like animals, but I don't think it's fair for someone who decided to feed all these animals, sold their house, and had no concern as to what was going to happen to them, and the person who bought the house didn't want them, so now it falls on deer, okay? The other question that I have is, maybe we want to start asking people to license their cats, because if I owned a dog, I wouldn't be too happy that you're taking the money that I have to pay to license it to take care of a deer, a cat, a mouse, whatever you've got as a pet, when I'm paying for a dog license. So that may be something the town wants to look at, because it makes sense. How they take from dog licenses to take their cats. Why don't we take a pet, and a pet deer?
These cats apparently came from when the factories closed, so...
That's a long cat that lived a long life.
Well, they never were fixed. They kept spawning.
Cats will be cats, Barbara.
They've been proactive, and SOS has fixed these cats. So over the years, they recognize we have feral cats, they caught them, they got them fixed.
How much has that cost?
So euthanizer would be a permanent fix. And that may be something that you need to deal with on a personal level, on a town board level, that sometimes...
I believe she did that with donations, so...
Sometimes it's better to put the animal down than it is to expect everybody in the neighborhood to take care of it.
Well, we shipped five of the mounds at the cost of $100, which is close to 79 times five, which is considered $400. $440 or something.
But now it still goes back to the person who did what they thought was a nice gesture in taking care of it, and then decided to get up and move, and now somebody else is responsible for fixing the problem. That's not responsible ownership.
Is there any accountability to that, Brian, where?
Well, they were feral to begin with.
Okay, I'm saying that, but if they were gambling for them, there had to be, there's that connection, that they never...
You mean like, once you feed this cat, you're responsible?
Well, in part.
They're going to keep coming back if you feed.
Yeah.
You are, I believe, but I think that Rhonda did say that there was some sort of liability for her doing that, but she wasn't sure how she was going to cite the person to court. I mean, it would have been...
I'm just asking the board to look at it, because it's been out of hand.
But you know, Stephanie? Well, this is like a very odd occurrence, right? It's not like it happens all the time.
Yeah.
So to punish the whole town of, everybody has to have license, because one time in history, somebody got a little carried away and fed a lot of cats, and it's never happened since, and probably is going to happen again, but now everybody has to have license, when, you know, it was a one-time occurrence, and that's going to happen with other animals also, I would think, and it's...
But it is true that this town once had numerous quantities of cats who existed on the canning factories.
Of course.
Yeah, and, um, I know one lived in the Smokehouse for a long time, Lubecrood landmarks, and it was amazing.
There's quite a few straight there.
They're quite, they're survivors, but, um, no.
The comment that was just made, that it was a once, a one-time thing, Stephanie?
For that, for that one lady that didn't think...
I hear what you're saying, but a precedent is being set by paying for this, and you do it once, and you can turn around and say, well, do you pay $100 to get rid of these? Now I want you to pay $100 to get rid of this. What if somebody raises a pack of dogs that are wild, feeds them out in the field, and they leave, and we got a bunch of dogs running around?
They shoot them.
Then I kill a cat, and I don't, I don't know how to hold a gun. Do you have a gun?
Rachel.
Shoot the dog, but not the cat. Take care of them.
No.
Do you play any Oakway?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
I say if there's money that's being raised by state statute, that it's earmarked for that intention, and that's the only thing it can spend for.
I don't disagree with Renee, but I have a, a problem or an issue where you're taking dog license money to take care of not dogs. If you wanted to turn around and spade those dogs at a discount, I'd say, yeah, because they paid for the license that, that gave you that money, but the cat people don't, I don't pay anything.
They, they have tried in the past, I think, to make us license cats, and they turned down, so...
Like hurting them.
On another note, looking forward to the marathon, we have had a request from Gail to, um, give him a new, another letter in support of his extending his building for the day to accommodate the thirsty marathon runners, and, uh, I'd need a...
Motion to amend to extend his serving area.
Second.
Did anything we did with our insurance, our new process of insurance, help in any way on the cost?
Did you tell Gail about that, um, insurance that you could get?
I don't know if that would help.
What's it called? Two-oh, you look? But, um...
I mean, I don't know if that, I'm, I'm just, I don't know if that qualifies, but I'm just saying, we did sort of revamp a process, and maybe it'll help save a little bit.
I just, I just want to say that I did contact, um, Co-Hills Water Street Tavern in Frank's, and extended the same letter of support if they'd like to do that. I don't know if they're interested, but at least they can't say that they didn't have it.
Yeah, question, yeah. Sure. Gail, doesn't your, your insurance that you carry?
I was just going to say that, yeah.
A certificate of insurance would be the only, I think, that the town would want to have from your, from your carrier.
So Gail, this letter was fine, so we can just kind of use this one and change the names and send it to the same person? So you'll, you'll review it? Okay, fine.
Well, if you would send it to me, uh, because I have work, because I have to attach another, um...
Okay, but address to this person, you're...
Yes, it's raining mostly.
Okay, fine. No problem.
Do you have to do a catering application?
It's not a catering.
It's an extension.
Extension of my premises, basically.
Different than catering.
This is for beer.
Yeah.
The motion that he extend his building out in the street.
Pizza people, I know.
Yeah.
Sebastian's Pizza People. You know, the copper thing. They're bad.
So I make a motion that we...
And they want it to be by you.
Make a motion that we...
Allowed Gail to extend his...
Allow Gail to have his establishment and extend his, uh, the standalone beer tent garden for the marathon.
And it, it pays with this, yeah?
On June 25th, 2017.
And you're taking the same hours as the street fair, or?
Yes.
Yeah, but we, uh, but...
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
But Dan made another motion to, to actually specify that it was marathon day and the date. It's just a, it was just a more specified motion.
And, uh, Dan, you said beer tent, and it's specifically not... You know, I said standalone, and...
It's not standalone.
But I mean, the beer...
It's an extension of my property, why?
It's just going to, you just have a little thing around it so people come in and they stay there.
You give me permission to extend into town property.
With, with said diagram.
And you're going to have the tables and all that good stuff.
Yeah, just using temporary fencing in order to host a one-day beer tasting event to be held, we're just going to do this exact letter, because if this worked for you last year, we're not going to change it. We're just going to change the date.
Yeah, because Rainy was working really hard to allow me to do it.
That's what I was thinking, that we would get the right wording. Okay. Fine, we'll do that. We have to sign, uh, Suzanne asked us to sign a letter, a memo to Bar Harbor that we're closing an ICS account, and I hate to tell you, I'm not quite sure why we're doing this, but she asked us to sign it. I guess we have an account and nothing in it, and they, and we're going to get fees incurred if we don't close it, so...
Do the grant, that's what I'll go.
Okay, so I need a motion to sign it.
So move.
And the second, and we need to sign it. All in favor?
That was in that road door they sent down. I think it's affecting nature, I think.
Now, now, for me trying not to mess up the bids. Now we get, I always leave the fun parts for the end. So let's see, this... Okay. Let's do, we've got fuel bids, propane bid. It just said bid, so I don't know what that is. Landfill, airport mowing, fuel bid. Let's just try to get the fuel, the fuel bids. There's the roadside mowing. Okay, roadside mowing. Don't take roadside mowing bids for me. Trash removal.
I'll take the other one, because if it's cashed, then it's not.
Airport mowing, airport, there's two airport mowings. I can't, I would like to know what that is, you and mine, okay? Yeah, I just want to know what kind of bid it is, which one, and we'll put it together. Trash removal, landfill mowing, propane bid. Okay, fuel bids. This one's from Fos, R. Foster. Is that, what kind of... Okay, fuel bids, this one's from Fi- Ari Foster, is that, what kind of bid is it for? Vehicle repair, vehicle repair, okay. So if you have, somebody wants to raise this down, the bid for Ari Foster is heating oil will be billed at Machias Rack price plus sixteen cents, any off-road or after-hours deliveries will be an additional hundred dollars. So let's just read the, here's three separate ones we can, just three separate ones. We're gonna just do the heating oil first. We have, we ask for three, we ask for propane, heating, and kerosene, because part of the general assistance program is if someone comes and need and needs their heat done, that we wanna be able, it's sixteen dot cents above Machias Rack. This one is from Eastern Plumbing, and their bid is number two fuel, that would be heating oil, right? Two point oh eight nine, it's a flat rate, so don't ask, um, get that one out, okay.
They just put a bidding for number two?
No, but I'm not doing all three, I'm not doing all three at once, it's too confusing, let's just do one at a time. Because we're not gonna go with the same person just because, unless you wanna do it that way.
Well, I'm saying, 'cause normally one truck carrier is both number two and number one.
Okay, Foster's wants, okay, let's do all three and see if we can give the same thing to, um, you know, bid, give awards a bid to one person, if it makes sense. Foster's is sixteen cents over the Machias Rack price with a hundred dollar additional fee. Yearly furnace maintenance, they have it in there, and hourly rate is sixty-five dollars. We can also provide silver efficiency contract at locations which qualify for one forty-nine. Gasoline and diesel for trucks is eight and a half cents discounted from the pump price. Propane is one point nine 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 for twenty-five hundred gallons next year.
For the sake of a minute, can I just put how the board, do I have to include all the...
You have to have all this on there. Usually there's a paper, John used to have a bidding paper that, no, I, I can't write it down as I'm reading them. Our future propane price at one point nine 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 for twenty-five cents, which will help avoid price spikes during the winter months. One point nine nine, I don't understand that.
For propane?
Yeah, but, uh, oh, a dollar ninety-nine, so a dollar, okay.
And both of them may be.
Okay, this looks weird. All right, that's all Foster's gave us. Dead River, fuel oil, option one, fixed price, one point eight three, eight-two a gallon, oil price two, landed price plus point, plus fifteen cents. See, this, we're gonna be here a while figuring this out, so... They gave an example, total landed cost, if it was a dollar sixty, the margin of fifteen cents, it would be a dollar seventy-five. So they, we could either go with fixed price or landed price, so now we can actually compare theirs to Foster's and, and Eastern, because one gave...
One went flat, and the other two went...
Yeah, one went sixteen cents over Machias Rack, so they just said landed price, is that the same? Okay.
No.
Jay, do you know how to plan that?
The truck they pay when it comes in the port.
Okay.
His weight, it was explained in the...
Is that cheap, is that cheaper than Machias Rack, cheaper than landed price? So let's look at the, let's look at the fixed rates. The fixed rates, one is two point oh eight nine, one is one point eight three, and this is, so if you wanna just look at fixed price, we would go with Dead River, right?
I would think fixed price, because that's, that's a contract price, and it's not dependent on market changes.
Won't there?
And that's a pretty good price, I'd say, one point eight three.
Yeah, it's a good price.
One point eight three, eight-two, and it doesn't have any stipulations as to how many gallons either. It doesn't have any overage delivery, if, you know, if they have to come out for anybody, it doesn't have, I don't know, they, they would, they just didn't include that. So we have a propane bid, what is the fuel bid?
Yeah, it does, um, vehicle.
Okay, this is Dead River's propane bid, fixed price, one point four four, and, yeah.
Won't there?
Yeah, can they send that, can they send that? And what's the propane one is one point six oh, and is there, there's no propane one here, it's one point nine nine.
And he's still with a dollar ninety-nine.
So it looks to me like Dead River is giving us really low prices on both, so, um, does anybody wanna look at all these just to make sure I didn't, uh...
I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement.
We're good with Dead River?
Yeah, motion to accept the bid.
Now, let me see, I didn't see any kerosene. Here you go.
And Eastern gives you a propane price?
Uh, one, one sixty, delivered to town on tanks. But Dead River gave us, um, one four four three oh, so it's one four four, dollars forty-four a gallon. Beginning June first and ending May thirty-first, so they didn't know, we should say it's July, it's July first, and we'll just tell them that. It should go with our fiscal year, because someone, but we don't have propane, bid it out now, so can't we start with that? Now? Yeah, we could, right?
The propane on our tank?
Yes, we'll get, buy the tank right away. I think that is a Dead River tank, it's the one, that's our only Dead River tank. Much cheaper, that, that was all based on, the reason why the propane's so low is because it's based on every, on our own tag.
Yeah.
Don't want you to take those. Okay.
So, is there a motion at this point?
Make a motion to accept Dead River's...
I vote for some of, yes.
Second.
For which bill?
Propane and...
Propane, number two, and, uh...
Is there kerosene in there?
Number two.
I, I didn't hear you say kerosene.
L E three two.
That's option number one, option number two, that's just for fuel oil, it doesn't say anything about kerosene. The only one that has kerosene in it is Eastern Plumbing. We've only used it once last year, and Eastern Plumbing said that they do the kerosene for two point four eight nine, so two dollars and forty-nine cents. We wanna just... I don't know if Dead River uses kerosene, so I don't know what to do about the kerosene, and we didn't get any kerosene price at all from Foster.
Where do we use kerosene?
GA.
General Assistance, there was one person that needed kerosene, it's not, it's not a big deal.
Okay, motion from Rachel to go with Dead River?
For propane and, and heating oil. And I'll second that, all in favor? I don't think we have any other, what are you gonna do with this, we have only one, are we gonna open that up? Let's do the airport, airport.
Just go where we asked for.
I think so, airport mowing, roadside mowing, this is vehicle repair, I don't, I don't know how you're gonna...
Just they're here.
I think, I think we do it, yeah. We only have one trash removal bid, and the people are here, do you wanna, um, review it? Because we can wait and try to get another bid, or we can do it now.
Are we gonna dip it with him at this point, or are we...
Well, we can, we don't have to accept, we don't have to accept the bid.
You're gonna do a straight exchange for propane, aren't you?
Okay, did you really, really have to put all this tape on here? It's super sealed, I can't hold it, I'm gonna rip it off. That's it, I need a knife.
You have to do it with the Johnny Carson style.
You have a knife?
I don't want you to pull it up to your head.
That's right. It breaks the paract.
There, I opened one of those like that, I ripped the bin half one time. With a letter opener.
Man, we've been on that TV so long, we should start getting bitten.
Okay, da-da-da-da, that's bid, though. Okay, we here at No So Rubbish would be honored to continue servicing the town of Lubec with the municipal trash removal. Our bid for the seventeen, eighteen municipal year is as follows, we will supply one four-yard dumpster, which will be placed outside the Lubec Town Office and emptied once per week on Saturday. We will supply a one-two yard dumpster, which will be placed at the new town garage, this dumpster will be emptied as needed. We will check daily and empty as needed, three trash receptacles supplied by the town on Water Street. We will check daily and empty as needed, one receptacle placed by the town at the town here. We will check daily and empty as needed, one tractor receptacle placed at the town at the town marina. Wow, that's good. Our costs for these services will continue to be one forty a month, thank you for your consideration. We hope to continue to serve our town for another year. How would we like to proceed with this bid?
I, I vote we accept their bid.
Second, all in favor? Thank you very much.
I meant that they have to stay, though.
Yes, you can't leave until the end of the week. Oh, just a couple more bids. Roadside mowing, let's see what this is, uh-oh, I think I might go open this. Little bit in here? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna whip it. Uh, Town of Lubec from Jonathan Marshall, bid proposal for two thousand and seventeen, road mowing, one pass, about thirty-six miles, four thousand two hundred and ten. Okay, roadside mowing bid. What's that mean, anyway? He only, he rode, he does it once on thirty-six miles?
One pass is thirty-six miles.
That's, that's how many roads we have, that means he does every road once for four thousand dollars? I wish to submit a bid for the roadside mowing within the town of Lubec to be completed one time within the mowing season at a cost of thirty-one hundred dollars. James Doherty, for the payment to be made upon completion of services, and here's his insurance.
What was that?
James Doherty. Landfill mowing, airport mowing, airport mowing, so, okay.
Put that for cash.
So, make a motion that James Doherty...
Who was your...
Oh, who was the other two? Second.
Who was the high bidder, man?
Jonathan Marshall. Forty-two hundred, four hundred and ten. Make a motion that we accept James Doherty's bid, second, all in favor? Landfill mowing, oh, okay, two bids for airport, he kept getting bids, yeah.
Can we just mandate that the price for this one?
Okay, I wish to submit a bid for the airport mowing, Mrs. James Doherty, within the town of Lubec to be completed on as requested, based at a cost of a hundred and thirty-nine dollars each time, with payments to be made upon completion. He's very good in putting that, he wants to get paid when he's done, I like that, pretty good, you know, don't get paid.
He's doing the airport.
Airports, this is airport, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars each time. This is riff mowing, riffs, rip, Down East Land Improvement, Gray Morrison, a hundred and thirty-five dollars per mowing. Four dollars less than James, and how would you like to proceed? They both submitted insurance.
Make a motion then that we accept.
So Gray is, is bidding on the airport?
They both are. They both are.
Yeah, I know, but I, I didn't know what he was saying specifically to the airport.
Yes.
It was a bid of Down East Improvement, that's a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Mm-hmm, has the mowing job.
And he's not, what question do you pay that each time, or is that...
I'm sure it's expecting.
Gray Morrison bid, second.
All in favor? Thank you very much for those bids, they were very close. Landfill mowing bid, I'm glad we're lucky to have somebody who wants to do that, I think, is also from Gray Morrison, two hundred, uh, I'm sorry, two hundred and ninety dollars total, I will cut the landfill area twice, once during June and once in October for two hundred and twenty dollars total, I mean, sorry, two hundred and ninety dollars total, so that's good. That's very good, and this, airport one is as, as needed for safety, for safe landing, so if we get a call from his landing there, we can go mowing. We do have some people that do land, that are... This is vehicle repairs. I see, oh, yeah, we have to vote on that, I'm sorry, we need a motion to, um, Gray Morrison.
Down East, uh, way through, two hundred and ninety dollars as two times.
Two times, yes.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, man. For what we're here for. I would like to bid for the upcoming year seventeen, eighteen, fifty dollars per hour vehicle repairs. We look forward to serving you in the future, thank you for your continued support, Randy Hall. Okay. Would you like to step back there, make a motion?
I would step back there, yeah.
Sold bid.
Second.
And this is for all the vehicles throughout the year, should they need to be...
It's for all the vehicles, yes, and, um, unless they have really big ones, this is the only bidder this year. And the really giant trucks, we have to sometimes go to Hollowell. Because, but they'll take them to Randy first, and if he can't fix them, then they take them somewhere. Well, I noticed that, let's vote on here, vote on.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
No motion?
I think it was Tony, and I second it.
Okay.
Um, if I could just speak to this, which is, you know, not a really good, I noticed, I think it was a year ago we voted on this, and there was a kind of bidding war between Monda, Corey, and Randy. And yet, in reality, during the winter, if things get tough, if things get overrun, they either go to Randy or they go to somebody. It's never a set in stone, so it almost makes this bidding a moot point.
You're, you're right, it was Peter Yidds a lot.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that this bidding against each other is such a great idea, for, for that particular thing.
I think that they do trade off, I think when the smaller truck has a problem, and the littler pickup needs something, or the recycling truck needs something, they do go to Corey's, and they go there all the time for carts and equipment, and, you know, it's all, whatever they need. And so I think...
As much as probably municipally mandated, I think they all do many of that.
If they have two vehicles break down...
I'm not gonna stop.
They just call around, they'll find somebody to, yeah, and I, yes, I'm, I'm always dubious about this bid for this.
Well, we stop just in time, they have torrential rain.
Does that ring?
Do we have any public comments, so we don't have to go out on this for a minute?
I have one question, well, one question, and it's stated before, that South Quebec, we're a Vanford landowner.
Yes.
If it's accepted by the town, how much is coming, how much is their practice that's coming off the tax hole? Because Quebec's getting a lot of organizations that are coming in, buying up land, going to nonprofit, and everybody else is flipping, you know, it's picking up.
Well, and then, in defense of, in defense of this particular property, they have a nice house across the street, which they pay on sure fare tax, this is just an unbuildable little piece of land that's been used for years, and they wanna make, I don't imagine it's gonna affect the taxes at all. They're gonna pay for all the lawyers' lawyer's fees, they're gonna pay for our, our fees as well as theirs, and I imagine if I ask them nicely...
So you're telling me it's two lots they have, one their house is on and one...
Well, yes, this, this, yes.
So they must be paying some kind of tax, I don't know.
And I can look that up for you, but, uh...
I'd like to know that, because we're curious.
You can't imagine it's more than a hundred dollars.
And I apologize that I did not know that there was a select for the after today's meeting, because I do run into hell.
Oh, the basket.
And I wanted to bring one made up and show you what it looked like, but the Welcome Ragging has given out two baskets this past week to two new members, one is road sailing on Route one, on one eighty-nine, and the other one from Youngling, who bought Brumford's house. We will have another one the end of June, they're coming from Vermont, so people are moving into our community. I will be, have a basket available, the only thing I will not put in it, and I will not seal it, is because the IGA did give us a little basket of fruit like they did at Christmas, my procedure, so I don't have that in there until the day before. But I would like to bring one to show you what people have donated and what the baskets look like. The two people, the two families that did receive it were astounded that they got welcomed into the community. The two people, the two families that did receive it were astounded that they got welcomed into the community and thought the people, the gifts that they got were phenomenal. So it's kind of a thank you for all the businesses that gave. And I hope those that forgot about it or that they'll get back to me will join in. It was really very nice to have them. Some of the guys.
We have sign rooms. Don't leave before signing those appointment papers.
I just wanna know, now that the bidding is closed, if the said yard, two yard, so dumpsters are gonna be delivered in a shiny truck. That I saw.
Oh.
I have a question, Carol. Who owns the Welcome to Lubec sign?
Where?
Across the Bunkies.
I can answer that, but I talked to Paul about.
Yeah, I found out.
Original Lubec sign that was made and painted was owned and built by the Historical Society.
Wow.
That sign, Bunky, I guess they had Bunky, which paid to have Dwight, is it Dwight?
Dwight.
Repainted.
Twenty TV's on it, the current one.
I think the lobster was initially painted or created by Lois Johnson.
Yes, and she was, uh, burned off, got the material and rebuilt it and then Lois based it. So hypothetically, Lubec Historical Society. And I would. Bunky paid the last time it had to be painted and he had to. He took it upon himself. But I have told Paul that if sometime something happens to them, the Historical Society will pay ownership back for keeping it.
And it's also become expanded because the marathon has a sign up above it and Bike Main. So it becomes a sort of sign that usually.
Who owns the land that it's on?
It's entrusted. That maybe it's given permission to have that sign there.
Then it says Welcome to Lubec, some part, so it's absolutely not in, obviously you're not really in Lubec when it says Welcome to Lubec. Oh, oh, still taking pictures.
Just to avoid potentially what could be a question, if Bike Main has a sign on it and the Bay of Fundy Marathon has a sign on it. What does it not entail that?
Everybody will want a sign.
Anybody, anybody will want a sign.
I'm being honest. One thing I would like to say, because I know somebody posted on Facebook last year, and it's nothing against the marathon, but we tripped down a spark bug. Which had a little light house on top of there, was taken down to put the marathon sign up. Maybe we can find a way, instead of starting to decorate that and Welcome to Lubec into the most town, something where that little house is and put things on there as opposed to that. Because we are fortunate, we have three lighthouses in our area and then a draw.
Did you have more to your question?
Yeah.
Just had a, just had a thought, did that.
I, for about ten years ago, the number of Boy Scouts took them and I taught. Flag editor as part of the leader. The flags are backwards. They have been told by the Legion that that is correct. I don't know who at the Legion told Bunky it was correct, it's wrong. The American flag always goes on its own right. Now, if I need to explain that, if you're standing facing the sign in the same direction the sign's going, the flag will be on your right. Right now, the American flag is on the left. So if you want to take the sign and put it over on Cantibello, it will be correct. Right now, it's wrong. And I don't know who to see.
Wow.
I'll talk to, maybe you're the best guy to talk to. Maybe if you put it in the paper, things will change. Now I set my pace.
Or maybe the Historical Society could talk to Bunky.
Switch the sides, the flags.
I, I know this has been an issue and I'm being honest and I hope you have in mind, one of our oldest members has talked to the commander at the Legion. And the former commander. She hooked up in her book and she is in dispute with him and that is not right. The other thing is the American flag should always fly higher than another country's flag and ours is not, it's evil.
That's not true.
I'm only telling you, Cecil, what I've been, we've been going around and around.
That's not true though.
We had, did ask to have the lighthouses moved because you have the American flag and mo-ha and white.
It doesn't.
I'm just saying, if, if people are here for something, because I already saw Russ Carney was an American, but it's under the Canadian flag. I know she's going around and around it and I don't know how to get an answer.
There's an easy way to fix it.
Oh.
No, there's an easy way to fix it. Put the American flag in the middle, higher.
I have a look at it.
Put the Canadian flag on one side, doesn't matter which, and the state flag on the other.
I like that.
You have three flags, the American flag is always in the center when you have three flags.
Hey, John, Boy Scout's on that.
Good flag.
So since there is no one that we can really go through, can we all just decide that's a real good idea and do it?
Sure.
You're alone?
Beautiful. I'll go down there.
Bunky is the one that does the flag.
So we can tell Bunky?
He's probably watching.
Bunky, Bunky hates the. Tony, turn around and tell Bunky to fix the flag.
Fix that flag.
Hello, Bunky.
Uh, technology.
Check the flag etiquette.
Well, I don't know. Any more public care, public comment? Renee wants to be part of the public for a minute, she has something to say.
Hey, committee update.
This is, um, well, this, this could begin the committee update. We'll start with the recycling committee. And Rachel jumped in anytime.
Sure, sure.
We've been collecting all the plastics. Rachel's garage is filling up because she is receiving the plastics one, three, four, five, six, seven. Except for two, because we keep the two, we make money on that. And.
I also have several bags that came out of Rudy's garage.
The, the volunteers dwindled and I guess a couple loads were taken elsewhere.
Jimmy Beuter took them down on his way to Portland two times with an absolutely loaded truck. I mean, it was packed full. Now, when Rudy started this venture, she had garnered several volunteers to do this, according to Rudy. And then when I pursued them, they're like, we don't go to Portland. We don't, you know, so it's.
But we don't have to go to Portland anymore.
We don't have to go to Portland.
So that's a good segue into this announcement.
Yes.
That, um, in conversation with Pleasant River Transfer Station, which is located in Columbia Falls. I'm trying to make sure it's the right noun, Columbia Falls is right on that stretch before the.
And there's a sign, isn't there a sign?
They're open Wednesday, Friday afternoons and all day Saturday. You don't have to be a member to recycle there. My mother, Carol, is the bookkeeper for that place and she talked to her boss and, and they're more than willing to take our plastics. They are still making a profit on it. Somehow, they sell the same people we do, Victor Horton at Maine Resource Recovery. I've been in contact with him, he says there's no market, he won't buy it from us. So we did try to sell it like they're selling it apparently, but at this point, we're just looking to get rid of it so we can continue the program. To continue to get it out of our waste stream and not paper it at Marion and still ultimately recycle. So we still need volunteers, but you just don't have to take it to Portland.
Yeah. Yeah, so you're going, you're going to Elsework.
Yes.
You could just go, all me's, my garage is open, just pick it up, help yourself.
Two of the bottles, two of the plastic.
Just the plastic.
When I was recovering and I couldn't move, I was so tired, and I would watch Kenny Moore's back up to the garage and go, oh no. And Rudy, I think every, all of us were cursing Rudy.
But now we got a solution, it just sounds great.
And however, if this still, if we can't get the people to, to volunteer and take the plastics. Ultimately, would you agree that the program will have to end?
Yeah, I, I.
So this is another test to try to get people to, if you want this program to continue, come forward and please help out and, and transport.
Maybe people go to Elsework frequently and so that's an easy drop off.
And just going in with your eyes wide open with this, it's not a matter of just taking a giant bag of plastic and dropping it off. You would be expected to sort it yourself, I believe. You can't just drop it.
Oh, you want it sorted?
When people recycle there, they, they have been a window.
One, two, three, four, by number?
One, three, four, five, six and seven, we're taking one with seven now.
I'm not sure how they have it sorted there. I don't know if it's all one plastic.
What are we taking right now, one and five? Besides two, you know, we shouldn't think one, two and five, I thought we were taking.
Everything.
Without causing any conflict with the person you asked around.
One through seven.
Well, they, they will take them, I know anyone.
Not on that. Yeah, up until that point, you had to.
Okay, yes, committee adjourned.
Alright, committee update, revolving loan, it will be the Tuesday before the first June Selectment meeting. But uh, I think it's the, I'm gonna guess like, you know, the twelfth, because I think the thirtieth is.
The first Selectment meeting in June is the fourteenth.
Yeah, so the thirteenth, Tuesday, the thirteenth, that three o'clock, right?
Uh, we have a very important Shellfish meeting, um, May eighth at six o'clock, because we're gonna be having our last confirmation. So we're gonna be announcing the last confirmation, so if you don't go to that one, you will not have the confirmation discount of the year. And economic development is June, what do we put it at? Oh, May thirty-first. Eight thirty-fourth to five. Tony?
I'll go at May seventeenth, six o'clock. And you know, we're working on reviving voice on the issues that need.
May seventeenth is a Wednesday.
May seventeenth.
May eighteenth.
Yep, May eighteenth.
May eighteenth at six. And aren't you not meeting down at, behind Dewey's?
Right, we're gonna meet down there, see what we can and need on the folks, worship group. And then go over to worship here and look, look at that.
Rachel, any meetings?
Well, I was going to say recycling has not, I have not met for a month, so I'm assuming we should meet the second Friday.
How many committee members will we have left, Mike?
Well, there's Michael.
We should announce that there is.
An opening, yes.
It's just you two.
It's just us two.
Put something on a bulletin board that we need some recycling committee members, maybe we can get like once a month.
We should meet nonetheless, hold the, hold the date and meet nonetheless, because there's.
That would be like May the twelfth, is that right? The second Friday?
Second Friday.
Maybe we could put a green around our.
And that would be like one o'clock.
How, how expensive would it be to put all of that stuff and go down there once a month, if it's separated? No, they have to be separated. It would have to be separated, right?
It's not with, was it?
No. Kenny takes it first.
No, it's, this is the moment to do the right thing and end that program, which is just, you did have volunteers to begin.
Yeah.
So you think we should vote to end the program right now?
Well, it's, it wasn't like we're gonna lose anything on our, on our revenue stream of what we collect and do get something for it.
Yes, we don't, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mike, I do. And I'm concerned about the bags in my garage.
Well, it's your, it's your, this board's decision, because you stepped in when this was foisted on you to set it up. And you said that, so it's up to you to say that we're suspending this and uh.
I never thought of that idea in the first place.
You got blessed it. You said we'll try it for a year.
Uh, no, actually, I actually, I said I'd try it for three months. I purposely.
Three months is up.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, um, and I, you know, I have to say it's unfortunate.
It is, it is.
But I agree with you.
It will be put on the next agenda because we don't have any feedback, so we will vote on this in two weeks.
Very good.
And not vote one on it now.
At the next, at the next recycle meeting, uh, we can get back on track with some of the other ways.
Yes.
If we can't sign money in the budget to increase our much needed storage space, then maybe we should consider a different piece of equipment to reduce the space that's needed. For the materials we are able to get a revenue.
Exactly.
But we'll talk about, more about that at that meeting.
Right, so you'll have your, you'll have your meeting before our next meeting?
One o'clock.
I believe so. One of your next meetings.
Now, is your recycling meeting before our next meeting?
Maybe not the next one.
Could perhaps your committee of two meet before our next?
It's not really a meeting technically, it would be a work.
I don't like the way you put that, Mr. Wagner. Yeah, it's before the next, yeah.
So you go down there and railroad some nice people that would love to be in recycling like I did on. Yes, get them right on there, well, I did. I got Julie Keen on the.